Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, September 2nd. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do we have any declaration of conflicts today? Seeing none, I should just note that we have Manager David Gundrum on line this evening, as well as resident member Sen and Jackie. So, that was everybody, wasn't it, Jason? Online? Okay, thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Bob Kenny. All those in favor? Are you in favor, Jackie and Sen?
In favor.
In favor, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you very much. Adoption of the minutes from our previous meeting. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Paul Conley. All those in favor?
In favor.
Great, thank you, Jackie. Any business?
In favor.
Oh, thank you, Sen. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we can move right on to our reports. And our first report will be presented by Stephanie, and it's 300 Fitzroy Street, PID 352617. Over to you, Stephanie.
Good evening, members of the board. I will be presenting the first two items on the agenda. My first application is for a major variance located at 300 Fitzroy Street, PID 352617, to allow for the construction of a garden suite on a lot less than 0.5 acres, to allow for three accessory buildings on a lot less than 0.499 acres, and to increase the maximum total combined footprint of all accessory buildings to 80.81 meters squared. The subject property is located on an interior lot on Fitzroy Street and is primarily surrounded by residential uses. The property currently contains a single detached dwelling and two accessory buildings with a total combined area of 13.91 meters squared. The proposed garden suite can be seen outlined in blue on the site plan and is a total of 66.90 meters squared. On August 1st, 2025, a total of 50 letters were circulated to surrounding properties advising of the application and requesting comments and feedback. One response was received. Staff's analysis of the proposal concluded that there were no negative implications as a result of the proposed garden suite, as the property has adequate green space and on-site parking. Additionally, it will not impede privacy or cause shadowing on neighboring properties. This proposal will contribute towards the need for additional housing options within the city. Staff's recommendation is that Planning Board recommends that Council approve the proposed major variance for the subject property identified as 300 Fitzroy Street, PID 352617, to allow for the construction of a garden suite on a lot less than 0.2 hectares in size, allow for three accessory buildings on a lot less than 0.499 acres, and to increase the maximum total combined footprint of all accessory buildings to 80.81 meters squared. That concludes my first presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. So, just so I can understand this correctly, our existing rule is usually, in a city property, you can have two accessory buildings and not exceed, is it 640 square feet each?
Um, through the chair just one moment. I just have to double-check. Yes, for a lot that's 0.499 acres, you're allowed up to two accessory buildings with a maximum of 750 square feet, which is 69.68 square meters.
750, okay, great. And so what they're basically asking is to have this third accessory building, but they're going to use it as a garden suite?
Correct.
And so we're addressing the housing concerns, is what you're saying? Probably completely off-topic, but I know, we're all curious. Do we, and it's really irrelevant, but are we addressing the long-term housing shortage? Or are we looking at a short-term rental here? Or maybe, maybe we don't know?
We're not 100% sure. Our bylaw does allow a garden suite to be used as a short-term rental.
I know. If they're, if they're in the property at the same time, they can't leave?
Correct.
Yeah. They have to be, they have to be owner-present during the renting of the garden suite?
Correct.
Yes.
So, we can't control?
I know.
Exactly what it's used for?
Gotcha.
But it will, it gives the potential to be used for additional housing.
Right.
We're always in favor of that.
I know. So, we can say it potentially could address our housing shortage? Yeah. Hmm, okay, I'm just going to open it up to the board. Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. I know this lot, and I know it's huge. It's really deep. How, what is the acreage? And I'm sure it's in there, there's all these numbers popping out. What's the exact acreage?
Point four.
Point four. And we're looking anyway, I think, as we move into the zoning and development bylaw, right, to kind of reduce that a little bit in the city if it fits, again, the property. So, I know that this is a really deep property, and I'm sure it will fit fine.
Thank you for that, Counselor McCabe. Anybody else? Jackie or Sen?
No questions or comments, Madam Chair.
Okay.
No questions or comments here either.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have a problem with this particular lot or allowing it. My, I do share the same concern. You know, the last line did say the construction of a garden suite can also contribute toward the need for additional housing, which would be great. And that's the purpose, I think, of why we are looking at allowing garden suites. But if there's multiple options for rental, either short-term or long-term, I think, if I'm correct, most people are opting to go to, I do know of situations like this, other properties that have been approved that are being used on a short-term rental basis. So, I would have, I would have concerns about that. And as we go forward and look at it in our zoning and development bylaw, I'll be looking at that again, I think, when it comes up for discussion at a later time. So, I'm reluctant in this situation. I think the member or the applicant is here. Is it okay, Madam Chair, if she speaks to that particular question?
Can I just point of order that for a moment, though? Because I don't think we can determine how they choose to use their building regardless. We're looking at whether or not we feel the garden suite's appropriate on the land use. So, not that I don't disagree, it would be lovely if it was for long-term, but I don't think anywhere, right now, we have that authority, do we, to say no because of that?
Counselor McCabe, you're 100% correct. We, even if they chose to do a short-term rental, they're within the existing zoning and development bylaw and the short-term, yeah. So, Stephanie was spot-on when she said, you know, although, wouldn't it be nice if it was long-term? It's really, you know, I probably shouldn't even have opened Pandora's Box by bringing that up, because it really wasn't a question that, you know, with the old saying, "Strike from the record." No. But, I mean, we certainly can, to Counselor Beck's question, it's no problem at all if the, if the applicant is here and wants to address the question, they certainly can, but they don't have to either. So, if you want to, you can address Counselor Beck's question, but you don't have to, because it's, it's not relevant to your application.
So, presently, actually, I'm not really sure what the end result will be. It could be a long-term rental. We live proximal to the trail, so it could be a UPI student or a Holland College student that lives in that, the garden suite. It could be my mother. She's 80, so we don't know. Currently doesn't need it, but might down the road. Those are kind of the options that I'm looking at right now.
Thank you for that. Oh.
Michelle Visser.
Yeah, Michelle Visser. Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
No, no.
I saw your mic on. Okay. Any other questions? Staff are recommending that we support, staff's recommendation to support this application and move it on to council with the support. So, I see Lee McDonald has moved it, and Counselor McCabe has seconded it. So, the resolution's on the floor. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none. Does the major variance actually go on to council? Usually sometimes minor variances don't. I can't remember with this one.
Major variances do go to council, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. So, all those in favor of supporting staff's recommendation to support this application?
In favor.
In favor.
So, that is all in favor with one opposed. Counselor Beck is opposed. So, we'll move that on to council with the support of staff's recommendation. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Okay. Moving on to the next application. 103 Pioneer Avenue, PID 1003185. And over to you.
All right. My second application is for a minor variance located at 103 Pioneer Avenue, PID 1003185, to allow for, in addition, to project into the front yard setback area by 0.88 meters to accommodate a new entryway. The subject property is located at the corner of Acadian Drive and Pioneer Avenue and is primarily surrounded by residential and institutional uses. The proposed entryway can be seen shaded in dark gray on the site plan. On August 1st, 2025, a total of 22 letters were circulated to surrounding properties advising of the application and requesting comments and feedback. No responses were received. Staff's analysis of the proposal concluded that there were no negative implications as a result of the proposal. It doesn't obstruct visibility for pedestrians or motor vehicles at the Acadian Drive and Pioneer Avenue intersection, and it still has adequate setback from the front property Staff's recommendation is that Planning Board direct planning staff to approve the proposed minor variance for the subject property addressed as 103 Pioneer Avenue, PID 1003185, to allow for, in addition, to project into the front yard setback area by 0.88 meters. And that concludes my final presentation for the evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Any questions? Okay. So, moved by Counselor Beck and seconded by Counselor McCabe to accept staff's recommendation. So, the questions on the floor and the resolution. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And thank you, Stephanie. Okay. Moving on to the next application, that would be Laurel. And it is Birchwood Street, unaddressed property, PID 363515. Over to you, Laurel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of Planning Board. This is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone property on Birchwood Street, PID number 363515, from low-density residential R2 to institutional, to amend Appendix A, the official plan map for PID number 363515, from low-density residential to institutional, and to consolidate PID number 363515 on Birchwood Street with PID number 363341, which is 49 Longworth Avenue, Birchwood School. So, the surrounding context, the property is bounded to the north by low-density residential housing consisting of R2 zoned lands. So, right here. To the east by institutional zoned land occupied by a local cemetery and R3 zoned land occupied by multi-unit housing. This is the semi, oh, I keep losing. There's a cemetery and multi-unit housing just below. To the south with Birchwood School, zone institutional, and Longworth Avenue. Birchwood School is here, this is Longworth Avenue. And to the west with Birchwood Street and low-density housing consisting of R2 zoning on the west side of Birchwood Street. So, Birchwood Street and then R2 housing. The property is currently zoned R2, low-density residential. It's occupied by a parking lot for the school and open space, recreational space. So, the parking lot's here, and then in behind is some recreational space that's being used. It's separated from adjoining residential development with a tree line and fencing. So, you can see right here, there's a mature tree line, and they do have a chain-like fence. And on the other side, there's a single-family dwelling. It's located within a mature neighborhood, and it's within a walkable distance for many of the students that live in this area of the city. The total area of the lot proposed to be rezoned is .402 of an acre, so almost a half So, the government of Prince Edward Island, they've requested to rezone the property to allow for a mobile classroom to be placed on the site. The school is at capacity, and the mobile classroom will provide additional classroom space at this location. The mobile classroom is proposed to be placed over the common property boundary with Birchwood School and therefore requires the lots to be consolidated. So, they indicated the classroom would be approximately in this area. This is Birchwood School. Here is the lot, the boundary of the lot that they're proposing. So, before amending a bylaw or rezoning any parcel of land, council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public and the applicant. And council may, for reasons that are in the best interest of the city, reject a proposed amendment to this bylaw without public notice and without referral to a planning board. So, the request tonight is for, to proceed to public consultation. So, the official plan does support various policies that support educational institutions, and I've listed them within the report. I've also included a few in the presentation, but specifically point to, that's listed on the screen, "Our objective is to work with representatives of Charlottetown's educational institutions to ensure that their present and future physical space and land use requirements are factored into the city's planning processes. And our policy shall be to encourage representatives of the city's educational institutions to advise the planning board of their physical space and land use requirements, and we're warranted to ensure that the municipality's planning tools take account of those needs." So, those two sections are particularly relevant to this application. So, in conclusion, this is a well-established neighborhood. The school contributes to providing a need within the community. The area of the city contains a mix of single-detached, two-unit, and multi-unit housing. There are many young families that live in the area and within adjacent neighborhoods. The area is very walkable for students. Students are also bused in from other areas of the city to attend Birchwood School. Integrating housing and educational facilities within the immediate area attributes to building a complete neighborhood. There are also amenities in the area that are beneficial to young families such as parkland and open space, and the city transit system can also be accessed in this neighborhood. The property is currently being used as parking and green space for the school. Rezoning the property and consolidating it with the main school parcel will bring the subject property into conformity with the uses that are occupying it. And the mobile classroom will provide additional capacity to accommodate the educational needs of children within the neighborhood until a more permanent solution can be reached. It is of the opinion of planning staff that this proposal meets many of the technical requirements for the creation of a complete neighborhood, and staff are of the opinion that this request has merit and meets many of the policies and objectives of the official plan. So, the recommendation going forward is to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation for the request to amend Appendix A, the future land use map of the city of Charlottetown from low-density residential to institutional, and to request, and the request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw from R2, low-density residential to institutional, for the property located on Birchwood Street, immediately north and a immediately north and adjacent to Birchwood School, PID number 363515. And I haven't included the consolidation in the staff recommendation that will follow once public consultation is completed and will be in the following recommendations. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks for that. I have two questions. One, and this is a-- You can, you can, but I actually have a question that's not about this. It's about the actual presentation of the application. What happened to our reports that no longer have the applicants included in the report? This is completely different than last month and every other month. We always would have, at the top of it, the application, the applicant, and it would go from there, but these now don't have who the applicant are anymore. Something changed?
So further to our earlier discussion, the planning department is shifting to our corporate report structure, the template that is used amongst the rest of the city departments. So in an effort to standardize our approach across the city corporation, this is the template that's used. We can certainly tweak the report title to indicate who the applicant is if that's what the council's wish is moving forward.
We did include it in the body of the report, though. Government of Prince Edward Island.
Yep. Okay. Well, I guess that's a, that's a, I mean, what is that? Is that a recommendation from the board on to council? Or is that a future discussion somewhere else? Mike or Laurel?
We can just make an operational change if that's, if that's your wish. It's really an operational matter, but if that's a simple change that you'd prefer to see in the reports moving forward, we can certainly consider that.
I would just, but, I mean. Okay. Bob?
Yeah, this might seem pretty low-key, but the address as well, I find. If you go looking for, to say, where is that? You have to kind of read through a bunch of stuff to find the address. I would like to see that, if possible.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thanks. I'm just wondering if we're solving one problem and creating another. I understand the need. All the schools are bursting at the seams, but, and the space is needed, obviously, but what about the displaced parking? Where are the, where are the cars and vehicles that normally do park there? Are they going to be flowing out over into the, into the street?
I don't know, because I'm pretty sure it's already there. So we're kind of going through an application, and I think they already currently have the mobile already there.
They do.
Which, which is a whole other conversation.
Yeah, that is a whole other conversation.
To go to a public meeting with, to ask if it's okay when it's already up.
Yeah, when it's already there. Like, it seems like such a waste of staff time, and it's almost an insult to the residents that would come to a meeting because it's already there.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Agreed with that, Madam.
And you--
Madam Chair.
Just second, Sen, Dave's got a question. Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
The application's for a mobile unit, is that correct? Or are they calling, it looks like a building to me. I've been there.
Yes, through the chair. Staff wasn't aware that they did place it already. The application come in originally as a law consolidation to consolidate both parcels. And when I looked at it, I realized that it was zoned as a residential zone, and I told them they had to go through a rezoning process. We received the application in August, and school was slated to start in September. So as you know, a rezoning application takes approximately three months. They didn't indicate to me they were placing the classroom on-site until this was dealt with. So I wasn't aware of that. As far as the parking, they will have to meet the parking requirements for the school. So we will have to look at that when they provide us a site plan.
But again, I guess it's--
They do have--
It is an actual, it's a building that's been constructed there from what I can drive by, anyway.
Okay, their application does say a mobile unit. So I don't know if it's modular, if it's a modular unit that looks more like a--
Yeah, I don't think it was delivered. I think it was being, anyway, I could be wrong as well.
But they haven't applied for a building permit for, for a permit, permanent structure. So they've indicated that this was a facility that they would be moving on-site and then at a later date removing when they, when it came time for a more permanent solution.
So then, just before I come to you, Counselor McCabe. So is this then for a temporary variance? And then it will revert back to--
No, this isn't a variance. This is a rezoning.
A re, yeah, so if it's only temporary, why are we rezoning? And why not just a variance for them to do it temporarily?
Because the land, Madam Chair, is zoned R2, which is not a classroom. What they're doing with the land now, it doesn't meet the zone requirements. They have a piece of property that's zoned for residential use only, and they have parking and recreational land on it. So it doesn't meet the current zoning, and in order to, you know, solve the use that's going to be on the property, solve the issues with the land use, then it has to be rezoned and the property is consolidated.
Thank you. Counselor McCabe?
And I think that is what we have to, like, it's almost two separate things because they put the cart before the horse. To rezone the land, we have to follow this process, makes sense. But to say in our report, we're going to public meeting for a temporary use of a building that's already there, we want to change that up somehow, and is there ways to back that up, to grant them permission to do what they already did? Yes, so through the chair. We're not going to a public meeting for temporary use. Or any, I know. We're going for the rezoning. It's not an application for a temporary use, but they've indicated this isn't a permanent use. I don't think this is going to be removed within the next year or two. So it's not, it's somewhat permanent in nature, but it's not a permanent structure. So my assumption would be that eventually they will have to add on to the school, like they have been in, with other schools and educational institutions within the city. They've been expanding. I would say that this currently isn't in the budget to do that type of an expansion at this time. That would be my assumption. But I can seek clarification from the government on that. Or just the fact that they put a building on without permission? Does that just, is there any repercussion to that? Well, I mean, there are repercussions under the bylaw for proceeding without a permit, which we would have to look at if that's the way you choose to. Just when you read the report, and I understand, because you didn't know. It just looks like that's what their intent to do is, and it's already been done. So to go to a public meeting, it's, it looks bad, in my opinion. Well, I, through the chair, I would assume that that would, you know, bring questions up from the public, and then that's going to have to be answered by the provincial government, once again, not, not counselor staff.
Thanks. So Laurel, when you mentioned that there's repercussions within their bylaw, and then I think I heard you say, and so that would be a, if that's what the board wants, but it's not so much what the board wants, it's what the rules are?
Well, the rules are, there are, there is a section on the bylaw for proceeding without a permit. And the reason why I say the board, I should say council, because I know I've dealt with issues in the past where, you know, we've proceeded and defined people, and that's been, we've allowed additional time for them to come into compliance. And, yeah, so. I don't know what more I can say on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I guess just, you know, note of public record. I mean, I think that, I think we have to apply the same lens to all of applications like this. Not because, yes, I understand these students need space, and I get that, but there's lots of other situations when people are not in compliance, and I think they all have to then be given the same leeway. It's for consistency, maybe. Anyways, I see Counselor Beck has his light on. Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Well, there's two, there's two distinct things here. One is an immediacy of school starting on Thursday, and they've got a surplus of students that they have to house. So I'm assuming that that mobile classroom has students designated to go there five periods a day or however many periods Birchwood Intermediate has. So there's two things. And we have to follow the process on the, on the zoning change request, but we are two days away from the start of school. And so I'm really not interested in getting into, I think I'm looking at the practicality of trying to have students in an overcrowded school. And if we can do whatever we can to make that happen, I would be supportive of. But, you know, I know we're in a bit of an awkward situation, and the timing of it is probably not that great, but I kind of see them as two separate issues. One is a little more long-term, and one is two days from now. So if it comes to anything, I'm hearing rumblings about repercussions or whatever it is, but I'm not interested in any repercussions for--
No.
--trying to get students in, housed into an education system. So we're working within the, I guess, the peculiarities of our zoning and bylaw, but anyway, that's my thought.
Counselor-- I'd just like to quickly express--
Just one second, Jackie. Just one second.
I don't disagree that we--
I'm just taking it over to, as soon as Counselor McCabe is done. Jackie, I'll move it on to you, okay? Two minutes.
I don't disagree, Counselor Beck, that we have to act for the students, for sure. But I'm going to guess that they probably knew in June, or maybe May, or maybe even April, that they were going to have an issue with numbers if they had placed this building, which they did, on July 4th. So there was, there was certainly time for them to come and apply for the right permits that they needed, and they do, they oversee the Planning Act for the whole provincial, right? So they're, they're familiar with what the rules are, probably. It was more a point that it's frustrating when we're going to a public meeting and things have already been done. And kind of shame on them.
Thank you for that, Counselor McCabe. Go ahead, Jackie. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, that's okay. No, I just wanted to express that I'm fully aligned with Counselor Beck's, what he spoke about. Just, and I know we're all sort of saying the same thing here, but in the best interest of getting kids into that unit in a couple days and maybe a longer-term discussion about, you know, the nature of the timing of this request. But I fully support what he said.
And just a note, just a note of, a point of clarification. The, the purpose of this report is to request a permanent change to the official plan, land use designation from low-density residential to institutional. So the portable building is a whole other thing that is, as Laurel said, is not about going, this is not about students getting in a building. This is about the province applying for a change of use that Laurel discovered was long since had to be done, that hadn't been done prior to that. I guess staff will have to sort out the complexities around a structure that hasn't gotten a permit yet. Go ahead, Laurel.
Madam Chair.
Hang tight, Sen. Just Laurel's going to speak, and then over to you.
Yes, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, I had been working with the provincial government staff, and the staff that I was working with, they didn't realize that the property was a separate zone. They come in with an application. They were working with the surveyor earlier in the spring. That's on staff with the provincial government to, to survey the land. And when they come in, they had the survey prepared and the application to consolidate the property. So the application was for a consolidation, and then they would have applied for a building permit to put the mobile classroom on-site. When I looked at the consolidation plan and I checked the mapping, I realized that the property that we are currently looking to rezon wasn't the correct zone for what they wanted to do. So I called them, and I told them the situation that they were into and that they would have to apply for rezoning, and that it did take, you were, that they would be looking up to three months, like, for rezoning. So I don't think there was any ill intent on the part of the provincial government staff that was dealing with the application. I just believe that they were not aware of it, and staff, planning staff, made them aware of it.
Maybe we could indicate that and update our report for council when we move it on. So, because that's a good piece of information that maybe could be included in the report, if that's something that, that you guys could add in as it moves on to council. Might make for more clarification.
I think that would just be reflected in the minutes. Once the staff report is put forward, it's the staff report. If board wants to, if the board wants to offer a different recommendation, we have the ability, the ability to do so. But that new information would be reflected in the minutes for council's consideration.
That's, thank you for that, Mike, but we have had lots of times when reports were updated before they moved on to council. So is that something new? Because we've, we've updated reports before, during Planning Board and then moved them on to council.
We're not aware of any reports that are being updated between Planning Board and council, but we can certainly take a look at it.
Sen, did you have a question?
No, Madam Chair. Just wanted to provide some context here. Just on this, two things surfacing here. Number one is obviously there is a, this is non-conforming use at the moment. You know, as, as the planners rightfully noted, that it's not properly zoned. And I'm not questioning the intention at all of the provincial government, but somewhere there was lack of, you know, you know, due diligence on part of the government. And there is no excuse for that. You know, when you, you go on to, if, for example, if I'm building a house in a, in a piece of land, I need to make sure that whether I'm allowed to build a house in that piece of land. You know, that's just common sense. You know, and, and that's, that's not an excuse. But here is another thing. It's already there, you know. There is an intention to rezone, and I think it's appropriate, it should be rezoned from, from R2 to, to institutional. And that process will follow. Question here is like, you know, that the, you know, they already have a use, which is technically illegal. Is the city willing to enforce it? That's really not my decision. That's the decision of the, of the council and the, and the, and the administration. Second point is whether or not, you know, whether or not the appropriate process was followed. You know, because I know this application, we, we had the law consolidation. You know, after law consolidation, whether it should have been rezoned around the same time. You know, the planners could just throw some light, you know. Does the process allow you to have consolidation and rezoning at the same time? Like a concurrent application?
Yes, through the chair. We've done lots of law consolidations and rezonings concurrently. Usually when we are dealing with properties that have to be rezoned and consolidated. If you remember, the application for the East Royalty School not long ago, it was similar. So I'm trying to think of other ones, but we've done several over the years. It's a common process. It wouldn't be a separate process.
Right.
That's why we would deal with the, when we bring our final recommendation forward after the public meeting, we would recommend on the consolidation. I'm not currently recommending on the consolidation in this, in the application to proceed to public consultation, because we don't know if it's going to be rezoned yet.
Great, thank you very much, Laurel, for that clarification. Counselor Beck, you have your light on.
Yeah. There's another lot beside there, is there not, Laura? Further to the north, like, we're looking to rezone one parcel from R1L to institutional. Is there not another lot to the north? If you look up on that map. See, yeah, right there. You see, it's three, I don't know if my readers on, 36115, we're looking to--
So that, through the chair, this is the property to be rezoned.
Yes, and the 363507, the one next to it?
This one? No, it's this one we're rezoning.
I, I know, but what's the 363507? Is that a residential? Is that a house currently? Is that the one that has the fence beside it?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking-- Okay, so we're talking about that whole green area there that we're looking to rezone?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so that is right up until that chain link fence that separates the residences from the other. Right there, that whole area?
So there's the chain link.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? If not, staff is recommending that we proceed to public consultation. So all those in favor of moving on to public consultation? Wonderful. Sen and Jackie?
In favor.
In favor.
Perfect, yeah. I believe, Councilor Beck, you moved that. Did you not move the resolution? Yeah, right. Yeah, well, we can. We can, yeah. And so, yeah, so who wanted to? Okay, thanks, Dave. So moved by Councilor Beck and seconded by Dave. All right, so we'll move that on to council with a recommendation from the staff and the Planning Board to proceed to public consultation. Thanks, everyone, and thank you, Laurel. Okay, moving on to our next application. That is presented by Michael. 66 McGill Avenue, PID 355073. Over to you.
Just a point of order up top. The PID you just referenced is incorrect, but that's okay at this stage because we have not sent letters to the public or done any of the legislative requirements. That was the PID number that was included on the application. But when we pulled mapping, it is actually 355057. So just a point of order for upfront. So thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a request for public consultation regarding 66 McGill Avenue, PID 355057, which is a rezoning request. That rezoning request, the request is to proceed to public consultation concerning a proposed rezoning of the subject property from single detached residential, R1S, to medium density residential townhouse, R3T, to facilitate the renovation of existing structure so it can be redeveloped to be used as a three-unit converted dwelling. The subject property is located on McGill Avenue, inset by one parcel from the corner of McGill Avenue and North River Road. It is primarily surrounded by residential and institutional uses. The rezoning request is intended to facilitate the redevelopment of an existing non-compliant semi-detached dwelling so that it can be used, it can be renovated and used as a three-unit converted dwelling. On here, you can see, this is the site plan. The building, like, envelope has not been proposed to change. The footprint is largely staying the same, though there is on the plans an addition of a bylaw compliant accessory building to be used as part of the parking solutions on site. Drawings submitted with the application show the intended development plans to maintain the footprint of the existing structure. Plans largely maintain the exterior form while altering window and door locations. Submitted drawings also show bylaw compliant accessory building to be used for parking and the development of two outdoor parking spaces in the rear of the existing building. If the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is approved to proceed to public consultation phase, the Planning and Heritage Department will notify of future public meeting date in accordance with 3.10.4 of the zoning and development bylaw. As per Section 3.10.3 of the zoning and development bylaw, before any rezoning of land can occur, council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public and the applicant. Council may, for reasons that are in the best interest of the city, reject a proposed rezoning without public notice and without referral to a public meeting. But if the application goes to a public meeting, the council shall depart the disposition of the application, and the applicant may not be allowed to withdraw the application after the public meeting. Our recommendation is that Planning Board approve a request to proceed to public consultation at a future public meeting of council for the subject property addressed to 66 McGill Avenue, PID 355057, to rezone the subject property from single detached residential, R1S, to medium density residential, R3T. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Can I move it? Yeah. Someone want to second it?
That's moved by Councilor Beck and seconded by Paul Conley. So the resolution is on the floor. Go ahead, Councilor Beck.
And just so I'm clear, can you just clarify something for me, Michael? It's on page 34. Shows the addition of a bylaw compliant accessory building. Currently, as it stands, there is a makeshift parking lot on the east side of the building. And then there's parking on the west side of the building, and it would lead into the back. It kind of slopes down in behind. So would the makeshift parking lot stay on the east side and be more formalized? And then on the west side of the building, it would lead, the parking would go back in behind? And then is there some kind of bylaw compliant accessory building being used for that parking? Can maybe elaborate for that for me? Because I'm not quite sure what that means.
Absolutely, through the chair. It's a little unclear of a site plan. It's just a scanning issue, but I'll kind of try to describe it over here. So if you look at this view, sorry, the highlight's not happening. That driveway there is leading to accessory building down here. This accessory building is a new proposal, but it meets the bylaw in terms of the setbacks, as far as we can tell. They're not at a permit stage where they have to have construction drawings, but in terms of what they've submitted with the rezoning application, it's a bylaw compliant accessory building to be used as parking. And then if you can see just north of there, that is that two units of parking stalls. I believe that to be new, but in practice, it will likely be repaved. So new is kind of a non-defined term in this way. But that driveway there is existing. The driveway entrances on both the east and west part of the parcel are existing driveway entrances, though the one that's heading to the, I guess that would be the east of the site, the one that heads back to the accessory dwelling, accessory building, is going to be extended back to that accessory building.
Okay. And just one question. How did it end up as a non-compliant property? It went from, because right now it's a duplex, and there's two doors in front. Was that done unknowingly, or did that just happen? Or was that approved at some point in time? I just live down the street, so I've seen the change in the property over the course of time. But how did that happen?
Through the chair. Yeah, I anticipated questions from you after our previous conversations in the neighborhood. In terms of when, like, the intent, I'm not sure of the applicant's intent or when they chose certain things. We don't have any permits on file from when you, like, if you look at Google Street View, when that changed to the front where the secondary entrance was added, we don't have any permits from within that time that would show that that was permitted work. And we don't have any legislative applications that would show that that is in compliance with the zone. So we are treating this like this is moving towards compliance of a non-compliant structure.
Okay.
Thanks for that clarity. Anybody else have any other questions? Jackie or Sen?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do you have any more, Councilor Beck? No. So the recommendation is that we proceed to public consultation. Do, we can call the vote. All those in favor of moving this on to council for public consultation? Sen and Jackie?
In favor. Thank you.
In favor, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And so we'll move that on. Thank you for that, Michael.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, the final, the final application today is an application for reconsideration at Havilland Street, PID 1100635. It's a request to reconsider a development permit issued by the City of Charlottetown with respect to site mobilization and construction hoarding on the subject property. And that will be presented by David Gundrum, who is online this evening. Over to you, David.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff, and good evening, members of the Planning Board, those in attendance. My apologies that I was unable to be there today as I took a sick day today. I'm still feeling a little bit under the weather. But I'll get through the presentation, and we'll move on to any questions that the board may have. Jason, I'll just prop you at each point to forward the slide for me from in the room there.
Yep.
Next slide, please. So as the chair mentioned, this is a request to reconsider issuance of a development permit, specifically permit number 214 BLD 25, which allowed for construction mobilization and construction hoarding on the subject property identified as PID 1100635, as highlighted in blue on the air photo on the screen. More specifically, this permit allowed for the establishment of a temporary construction trailer, temporary construction fencing, as well as limited site stripping on the subject property. The development permit in question was issued on July 15, 2025, and the subsequent request for reconsideration was filed on August 5, 2025 with the City of Charlottetown. Next slide, please. Subject property identified as PID 1100635 is a flag-shaped lot located on the west side of Havilland Street, approximately 50 meters north of the intersection with Water Street. Subject property has historically been vacant, containing no buildings or structures. Subject property is within the waterfront WF zone of the city's zoning and development bylaw. Surrounding properties contain multi-residential, institutional, as well as low to medium density residential uses. The photo on the screen is a site photo that was snapped approximately a week ago on August 26 by city staff just to show current conditions on the site with respect to the activity under permit. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the site is currently under active development via the development permit 214 BLD 25, which authorized establishment of a construction trailer, construction fencing on the site in addition to limited site preparation outside of a normal construction permit. The issued permit is in anticipation of the construction of a future seven-story, 49-unit apartment building on the subject property. The image on the screen is a site plan that was provided in support of the development permit that was issued. And just a note that the developer in question is APM Commercial. Next slide, please. So just a rundown of the history, recent history to date regarding this proposed development. Back on February 10, 2025, Design Review Board endorsed the proposed building design for the seven-story, 49-unit apartment building. On March 12, 2025, the city entered into a development agreement with the developer following legal review of the draft agreement. On July 15, the city issued the development permit up for reconsideration at the present time. That request for reconsideration was received on August 5. And also on August 5, the same party appealed the noted development permit to IREC, to the Island Regulatory and Appeals Commission. Next slide, please. So I'll just give a brief overview of the reconsideration process, and then we'll move into our evaluation of the three threshold tests. So there's going to be a lot of text on the remaining slides before you, just as an FYI. So in order for an application to be reconsidered, there are two stages to reconsideration request. When an applicant requests reconsideration, the application is required to pass a threshold test. To pass the threshold test, the applicant must provide sufficient particulars in the request to show that the request falls within the stated grounds contained within Section 3.15 of the zoning and development bylaw. Quoting from the zoning and development bylaw under Section 3.15.3, "Council may review, rescind, change, alter, or vary any order or decision made by the development officer or council, and council may reconsider any application under this section provided that (a) new material facts or evidence not available at the time of the initial order or decision have come to light; or (b) a material change of circumstances has occurred since the initial order or decision; or (c) there is a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or decision in the first instance." If after receiving a recommendation from the board council, city council determines that the request passes the threshold test, any one of the three, or two, or all three, reconsideration will be given based on the merits of the application. Next slide, please. The application is currently at that threshold test stage. Staff have reviewed the initial application and the grounds put forth by the applicant for reconsideration. The requesting party for reconsideration is basing their request on all three threshold tests as shown under Section 3.15. Next slide. "On the basis of the applicant's submission, the permit was found by planning staff to conform to all requirements that were necessary to issue the permit. On this basis, it was concluded at the time in July that the permit was deemed to be as of right under the provisions of the zoning bylaw and could be issued without any need for an application under the Planning Act that would require public consultation or a public process." Next slide, please. "Regarding the first threshold test, new material facts or evidence not available at the time of the initial order or decision. In the applicant's correspondence, there is reference made that the subject property is historically reclaimed land that was filled in during the 1950s, and as such, the property exists within a high-risk flood hazard area, and that the quality of local soils are suspect to potential existing environmental contamination. It should be made clear that while the mapping may identify the site as being within a high-risk flood hazard zone, there are no implementing regulations guided by legislation and enforced by either the province or the City of Charlottetown that would prevent development in proximity to the shoreline on the basis of flooding hazard, save and except for within the 15-meter buffer zone as detailed under the Province's Environmental Protection Act, or EPA, Water Course and Wetland Protection Regulations. At the time the permit was issued, contact was made with provincial staff, and clearance was obtained with respect to the EPA, Water Course and Wetland Protection Regulations for the specific permit. And similarly, Provincial Department of Environment staff responded with respect to the quality of earth and materials and confirmed that there existed no record of contamination for the subject property as far as the province is concerned." Next slide. "Further to this test, on this basis, there are no new material facts or evidence available that would have precluded or prevented the city from issuing the original permit as it concerns applicable and identified provincial regulations to date. There were also no regulations within the zoning and development bylaw that would have precluded the city from issuing the permit either on the basis of its scope." Next slide. "Moving on to the second threshold test, a material change of circumstances has occurred since initial order or decision. Since the issuance of the development permit on July 15, no material change of circumstance has occurred since that initial order or decision that would have affected the issuance of the permit. The factors that allowed the city to issue the mobilization permit at present exist the same as when it was originally issued on July 15. In their submissions, the reconsidering party has stated that under Sections 3.3.9D and 3.3.9E of the zoning bylaw, that permit for site mobilization and hoarding should have been rejected until after an environmental site assessment, ESA, have been rejected until after an environmental site assessment ESA or an environmental impact assessment EIA had been completed. As the permit only authorized installation of a construction trailer and construction fencing on the site, as well as limited stripping of material from the property, these activities, as well as the history of the property, were not confirmed by the provincial Department of Environment as passing the thresholds necessary to warrant the need for either an ESA or an EIA study." Next slide, please. "Moving on to the third threshold test, that whether there is a clear doubt as to correctness of the order or decision in the first instance. In their submissions, the applicant stated that there exists clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or decision in the first instance, claiming that there would have been need for variances by which to issue the permit in the first place. The applicant notes, or the reconsidering party, I'll use those two terms synonymously here. The applicant notes that variances for maximum front yard setback, maximum side yard setback, step back from interior lot lines, and land use buffers would be needed, and that overall the permit should not have been issued as it did not conform with all provisions of the city's zoning and development bylaw." Next slide, please. "With respect to maximum front yard setback, it needs to be made clear that the property in question is a flag-shaped lot, and as such, in relation to section 4812.3. D of the bylaw, no portion of the access strip or pole portion of the lot shall be included in computing the required lot area for the flag portion, and therefore, this portion, the pole portion, is also not accounted for in defining any portion of the front yard for the lot. On the basis of the site plan that was received, the front yard setback to the north wall of the proposed building would not exceed the maximum distance of four meters otherwise required by the waterfront WF zone, given the ability to discount the access strip or pole portion of the lot from this defined yard in this case. Therefore, no variances required with respect to allowable maximum front yard setback." Next slide. And these are just a couple of images to illustrate that point, and the quotation from the bylaw, Part D of that subsection, "No portion of the access strip, pole portion of the lot shall be included in computing the required lot area for the flag portion." Next slide. "With respect to maximum side yard setback, the bylaw under section 3.34.3 rather states that a setback may be permitted, but not to exceed 20% of the lot width or lot depth. A key term invoked here is the word "may" rather than "shall," which means that this is not a hard requirement that must be adhered to through the bylaw, and is optional in its application at an operational level based on the dynamics of a given site or property. Therefore, no variance is required in this case, because the need for a maximum side yard setback can be waived in this instance on the basis that there would be limited need to apply one based on potential land use impacts with respect to abutting lots to the north and south of the subject property." Next slide. "With respect to the step, building, building step backs that are referred to in the applicant's letter relating to section 34.3 of the zoning bylaw, it is important to note the following definitions that are contained under Appendix A of the bylaw that interrelate to where step backs may be required. The word "step back," as defined by the bylaw, means a specified horizontal recess from the top of a street wall, which shall be unobstructed from the street wall to the sky except as otherwise specified. Street wall means the wall of a building or portion of a wall facing a street line that is below the height of a specified step back or angular plane, which does not include minor recesses for elements such as doorways or intrusion such as bay windows. And lastly, street line means the division line between a street and a lot, providing the primary access to any lot and abutting along its length the required frontage. Due to the fact that the lot geometry being flag-shaped and location of the lot with respect to Havilland Street completely precludes the ability to establish a street wall by definition at all for any potential future building, this implies that step backs by their definition cannot be applied to the proposed building due to the inability to actually have a street wall. Therefore, no variance is required in this case, as the ability to create a street wall to which step backs would relate to through the definitions and be triggered under the regulations simply does not exist or could never exist, given the existing geometry of the lot with respect to Havilland Street and its current flag-shaped format." Next slide. "In their submission, the applicant states, and this is getting into the last point, under this threshold test around buff, land use buffers. In their submission, the applicant states that sections 46.11.4 and 46.11.7 of the bylaw are equally not being adhered to as it regards land use buffers with respect to parking and positioning of said parking. In correlating the site plan provided by the developers, all requirements have been found to be met. The proposed parking does not front directly to the street and is instead internal to the site beyond the access driveway or the pole portion of the flag-shaped lot. No two-meter buffer is required with respect to the street as per section 46.11.4. And additionally, the minimum buffer of 1.5 meters required along all lot lines is exclusive of driveway use under this section, and is otherwise provided along the perimeter of the parking areas as needed. With respect to section 46.11.7, there is no parking that is being provided directly between the building and a street, and therefore, no variance is required in this case, as the ability to meet all buffer requirements can be assured." Next slide, please. And this is just a site plan to show again the proposed positioning of the parking. Again, there's no parking between the building and Havilland Street. All buffers have an ability to be provided for. And again, there's no buffer that's required for the pole portion or access driveway portion of the development. Next slide, please. So to conclude, based on our evaluation, the planning and heritage department encourages Planning Board not to recommend to council to allow for the request to reconsider a decision of the city to issue a development permit, permit number 214 BLD 25, as it pertains to unaddressed property on Havilland Street, PID number 1100635, concerning site mobilization and construction hoarding. That is summary of the reconsideration request, our review and evaluation and recommendation to the board. And I'll turn it back over to the chair for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for that, David. Wow, that's a lot of work. Appreciate that. So the staff are recommending that to not reconsider this application. So as Counselor Beck pointed out, do we want to put a motion on the floor first, and then we'll talk? Okay, so that's moved by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Bobby Kenny. All right. So the motion's on the floor. Any questions? Counselor Beck.
Just a process question. So we recommend, we're recommending to not move this to council for reconsideration, correct?
So the reconsideration, I think, still has to go on to council. So we recommend that we, so staff is recommending that we do not reconsider the mobilization permit that staff had administered to the developer. And so if this board agrees with staff's recommendation, then that will go on to council. And if we disagree with staff's recommendation, it still goes on to council. Yeah. So either way.
Just let me see the wording again, because it's, Bobby and I were talking, it's one of those ones where it's kind of an awkwardly worded, we're getting into double negatives. We, you know what I mean? Like we're, I understand the nature of it, but just let me reread it again. So we're recommending, encouraging Planning Board not to recommend to council. So we're supporting, it's all to allow for the request to reconsider.
I know what you're meaning, Counselor Beck. You're thinking it maybe if it was worded, the planning and heritage department encourages Planning Board to not recommend the reconsideration.
Like it almost should say, the planning and heritage department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to deny the request to reconsider. I think that's a little clearer. It's just getting into a lot of double negatives here, and I think if we're kind of struggling with, if John Q. Public is reading this, they might, I get what the intent was, but so the, and I don't know if that goes against, because the request is for us to reconsider, but we're really denying that request to reconsider. We're recommending to council to deny the request to reconsider. So I guess maybe the wording, if we could change the wording on that, just to make it a little, a little bit clearer.
And that would be great, but we were just told four applications ago that, that reports are never changed. It's reflective in the minutes, so.
But I think we're reflecting it in the, in the actual motion, the motion that we're putting on the floor. Counselor McCabe moved to approve staff's request.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
And the way the recommendation is written is the way it is verbatim there. So if you're asking staff, and I don't, Counselor Beck, to have the wording a little clearer, but we were just told that we can't change a report. Go ahead, Mike or Laurel.
Madam Chair, I just want to bring to your attention, so, again, part of the reason why we're shifting to the corporate reports is to make it clear, committee or board recommendations versus the staff report. So on page 42 of the agenda package, there is the committee recommendation. If it's differing from staff's, if committee or the board in this case wants to change the language for the recommendation moving forward to council, you have the ability to do so, and that would be reflected in that, in that box in the report moving forward to council, if that makes sense.
It does make sense, but I challenge that, that we're not changing the recommendation. We're just changing the wording. So that, that also lends itself to confusion, because we're not differing staff's recommendation. We're just asking for it not to have the double negatives in it, right?
That's, that's basically, I'm just trying to simplify the language as much as we can, and I understand the intent. But, you know, if you're reading it afterwards, you have to go with what the report is saying. And if you're reading it, you might be kind of confused. Well, what did they actually, did they vote for that, or did they vote against that? Like, you know, it's just, I'm just trying to say if we can come up with a clearer language.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Sen, and then over to you, Laurel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two points here. First of all, a staff recommendation is not a resolution of the council. It's a fact. And, and, and second thing is that, you know, when staff making a recommendation to the Planning Board, it is often reflected in the resolutions that Planning Board adopts. However, you know, the, the language, and I agree with Counselor Beck in this case, you know, you, you know, this is, this could be very confusing. You know, a simple, you know, change in the, in the recommendation, you know, Planning Board to recommend to council not to allow the request to reconsider a decision, you know, and that could suffice the requirement. If it requires, you know, since the resolution is on the floor, I may put a resolution to amend the resolution on floor.
So would the purpose of the amendment be to reword the resolution? Is that what we're doing here?
We've done this before, where I know we can say, I am moving that we support staff recommendation to not reconsider the application that was currently there. Can we just say it that way?
Laurel, you wanted to speak. Go ahead.
So what's in the report is a recommendation. The staff, or the, the board, Madam Chair, will pass the resolution at the board, which we will, as staff, go back, and we will draft the resolution that actually goes to council. And in that resolution, we will say deny. A lot of times when you get reports here, and there's a recommendation, when we go back to, we go back to the office, and we actually draft the resolution that goes forward to council, it's reworded with more clarity. So this is just, this is a recommendation. We can change that not to deny.
Amazing. Perfect.
That will be changed when it goes forward.
Yep, that makes, that makes sense. So, yep. Yeah, appreciate the clarity that, yeah. Yep. Okay, so resolution's on the floor. All those in favor of accepting staff's recommendation? Sen and Jackie?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. That's great. Ooh, that concludes our agenda items, except for if we have any introduction of new business. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Paul Conley. All those in favor?
In favor.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Adjourned.
Thank you.